I'd like to help order the meeting for December 13th, the Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would all stand before the buzzer.
I'm with cable.
I pledge allegiance to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could pause for a moment of silence and remember all those less fortunate as we head into the holiday season. Thank you. We have an agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? If not...
I move to approve the agenda as written. Second.
PJ and Terry, thank you. We have an agenda. And we'll move to the public hearing. I'm sorry.
We have a vote.
Oh, a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll move to the public hearing portion of our meeting.
There'll be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners that following rules of procedure will apply to the hearing. A public notice that the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town's bulletin board that meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official records of the hearing. The town clerk will look forward to all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the hearing, part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made for a specific person for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement will be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward by giving your name and address. The public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider recommended local historical designation 3208 North Virginia Dare Trail Wool Cottage Cottage. Mayor Pretend there are no speakers. Does anyone in the audience desire to speak?
Back over to you. Is there any discussion? Motion will be in order.
May I make a motion of approval to add 3208 North Virginia Dare Trail Wool Cottage Cottage to local historic designation.
Can you dismiss my name? Is there a second?
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. For the public hearing.
So we will now move to our public comment period. Do we have anyone?
No ma'am, no one's signed up.
I would like to take advantage of that. And then I'll go to the podium. In case y'all don't know who I am, I'm Terry Gray. I'm the director of the Dare County Motorsports Charity Group. And I'm gonna do a little presentation. Our plaques came in. I'm gonna drop this one side. Our plaques came in and we want to appreciate the police department in Killable Hills. This year we had 107 motorcycles that participated in our toy run. We had 195 Jeeps. It was a pretty, pretty long procession. There's been talk about doing two separate events because it's getting so big. But we do this to raise money for underprivileged kids. This year we made a donation of $25,000 to the Dare Center in Manio so that they could buy Christmas for underprivileged kids. We're expecting the number to be about 400 kids. And we also had an additional 200 through a local church. It's, it's an annual event. We have a lot of participation. We have a local Jeep club that participates in it, Cat Five Jeep Club. We have the Outer Banks Rod and Custom that donates to us. We had no incidents. It was a incident-free event. And Killable Hills Police Department, and I normally say this when I address the Board of Commissioners, I say, "They made you look good." But this time I gotta say, "Killable Hills Police Department made us look good. They did a great job." And I'd like to ask the Assistant Chief to come up and receive a plaque. And I can guarantee you, I checked it twice. It's all spelled correctly.
I wouldn't have mentioned that.
But we appreciate what you do for us. We thank you very much. We couldn't do it without you.
We thank you.
And if you'll hang that in a good place so everybody can see it, we appreciate it.
And Terry, I have to say a lot of thanks goes to you as well.
I've got a fantastic group of volunteers to help. We have people from all over Dare County. There's no way you could do it without them.
Wonderful.
So, thank you very much.
You see, I was gonna say, when you see these pictures of the numbers of bikes and the toys and all that's being purchased for people that don't have a Christmas, that's really special. You might be saying that, aren't we?
Could be.
Yeah, we did a little longer.
Anyone else for public comment? And we'll move to introductions and presentations. So we have Sue with the Community Appearance Commission, and Commissioner Winley is going to help her present those awards.
Just have a couple of things to say pretty quickly. I wanted to, Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, speaking on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. I want to mention to you the names of the people who are on the Community Appearance Commission, even though only Christine has, has come to that. I'm really glad she's here. Melinda McGawski is our vice chair, Mambo Charalamas. And Melinda and John are our original members on the commission. David Rawlings, Billy Dorn, Joe Williams, Christine Damrose Malman, who's here. Martin Dalton, and the person we couldn't do it without, John Winley. We also want, I want to say thanks to our staff assistant, Jennifer Stecker, who we couldn't do it without either. And Michael O'Donnell. The whole administrative office is very supportive of what we do and makes it possible for us to do it. When the Community Appearance Commission was appointed, two things we took up that had been done in the past. One was trash attack, and the other was the Community Appearance Award. And Terry Gray remembers these things because he was Commissioner and Mayor during the time that those things were established. We're not sure why they quit doing them, but we're really happy to be doing them again. So tonight, we are presenting the two years, we do it every two years, I guess that's biennial, I guess that's the word, Community Appearance Awards. We give one, we give three awards. One is for best in a multi-unit complex or strip mall. The other is the most improved, and then of course, the top Community Appearance Award. Now, these go to, we consider commercial businesses, professional offices, and churches. And we're only dealing with things on the outside, but we do a very thorough process of nominating and then reviewing and using a numerical formula to determine. And I'll just quickly tell you what we're looking for. We're looking for the overall outside appearance. We don't do anything with the inside. It's just the outside. We're looking at the landscape, which always is a big one. Is the style appropriate? The architecture appropriate for our coastal area? How's the parking? How easy is it to get in and out of these businesses? What about their lighting? Are there amenities, picnic tables, or things for children to do? Trash and general maintenance? The harmony with surroundings and signage? They're the things that we look at when we do this. So I would like to begin, John, why don't you come help me? I need help. I need all the help I can get. This first group of folks, we'll see if people came. This first nominee is Beach Fitness. Uh, no, she's not here. Cause I know her. The Beach Music Shop. Which actually got nominated in two categories. Hang 12 Art Studio. We gave a lot of attention to Seagate North Shopping Center this year, cause we had several nominees coming out of there. This is probably the hardest category to do, because you know, it's a little space surrounded by other people. So, the last of the, also nominated, is Holy Cow Creamery, which is on the beach road. And the award goes to Max's Italian Restaurant and Pizzeria. Is anybody from Max's here? Okay. All right, our next group is most improved. And these are often new buildings, or it's something that's been completely redone into something else and ends up meeting the criteria for most improved. The Beach Music Shop, again, nominated. For the Dogs OBX LLC. The Holistic Pet Shop. And the winner of the most improved is Swellsus Brewing Beer Company. Anybody from Swellsus here? Okay, I think we all know that as a beautiful new building on the beach road. All right, now, the best overall. Ashley's, these are the other nominees. Ashley's Espresso Parlour and All Time Coffee Roasting Company. We usually have somebody come from some of these places. Outer Banks Presbyterian Church.
We're here.
Presbyterian Church. You don't mind I'm gonna take your picture of Dare County?
Wouldn't you know, it'd be the church that would show up? Yes.
At least know we're smiling.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. Another nominee is the Law Offices of Rose Harrison Gilrethan Powers. Okay, I think that... Cover those. Yeah. So now we come to the winner of this award, the overall winner. Winner is Professor Hacker's Lost Treasure Golf. Lost Treasure Golf. Well, we'll make sure they get those. So I guess that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
And a lot of work actually goes into this as the CAC members tend to explain. We have a nominating meeting where we all talk about which places we feel best deserve these awards. And then once we kind of categorize as a group who the nominees are, we're all responsible for visiting these businesses, scoring them on how we feel the best, and then go back and debate with each other who the winners really are. So it was, it's a pretty fun part of being on the CAC because you really get to have a lot of input and kind of argue in a polite way of who we feel deserves these awards. So it's a nice way to really recognize businesses that are going above and beyond to make our town beautiful. So, thank you Sue, thank you Christine, and Scott.
Thank you, John, and thank you Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
People really seem to appreciate the award. Usually when I've had to take the certificates around to the people and show up, which there will be some of that happening, people are very appreciative. Thank you.
I'm sure they know.
Thank you very much. You do a great job for the town.
Oh, thank you Terry, it's fun.
And thank you Commissioner Winley for all your work with the CAC as well.
Very good committee, sir.
So that concludes our introductions and presentations for this evening. We'll move on to old business, we'll be talking this evening. And we'll move on to new business, which is the fun part of the meeting and why most of you are here. We will open the certification of the election results, the oath of office. And Michael O'Donnell is gonna be helping us with that. Thank you, Michael.
Mayor, Mayor Pretend and Commissioners, following the municipal election, canvassing and certification, the following candidates received the following votes in Killable Hills. For Mayor, Ben Sproul with 490 votes. For Commissioner, Terrence Terry Gray with 437 votes. And John Winley with 438 votes. You'll now, with Board's pleasure, we'll move to the oaths of office. Mr. Gray, do you want to step up, try to please?
I brought the vash with me.
You know how to do this, you've done this few times. Raise your right hand. Look for her, she got you, she got you. Just repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Terrence Gray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of North Carolina.
Of the State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner of the Town of Killable Hills.
As Commissioner of the Town of Killable Hills.
According to the best of my skill and abilities.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
Do you all want to unmask for a minute since you know each other?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations Terry.
Thank you very much. All of you. Miss Aleah is gonna hold up for her dad today. Can everybody else just stand next to me? Always. Well. I'll have to stand right here.
So then this one's for the board. If you'd have to me, I, state your name.
I, John Winley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of my office as Commissioner.
Of my office as Commissioner.
Of the Town of Killable Hills.
Of the Town of Killable Hills.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll first take. Lakin, get your hand up. Smile. She.
Oh, okay.
Very nice.
Let everybody else out. Do you want cupcakes?
Anytime, it's okay with you and mom's fine.
Let's go ahead and let the, anybody who wants to take in a, for desserts or refreshment, please do so. You may have to get in line behind somebody else. While we're doing that, we can do some, some winners and awards just walk in the door. So we can take our pictures.
We have an award winner come, so we're gonna take a minute back up and let Sue present that award.
Before we go forward.
We just gotta rewind.
This is Professor Hacker's Paradise Lost.
Lost Treasure Golf.
Lost Treasure Golf. Which we all know, cause it's really attractive. John, if you would like to send with the award.
Yeah, I just, you know, your business has been one of the top ranking ones in the competition in the last few cycles. And it was a clear winner this time, not just because of how nice it looks and how well it's kept, but a real appreciation for how you keep the highest of standards for probably thousands of people circulating through that property every day. It takes, it takes a lot of work, and the town recognizes that. We really appreciate it and just wanted to thank you for it. If you don't mind, we're gonna snap a picture of you and I here and...
Oh, I see.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So mask it. Yeah. You guys comfortable with de-masking for a second? Please hold our breath.
I'll take a picture. Before y'all turn blue.
Never, never anything.
Sounds good.
I'm going to a couple of others who have shown up.
Oh!
Here's the box.
Well, better link it down.
Sue, the Holistic Pet Shop. We have someone here from the Holistic Pet Shop. We're proud to give you your certificate as having been nominated for our Appearance Awards.
Go on up here.
Take your picture. Thanks for coming. Who's here from Max's? So we also have the winner of the best in the strip mall or multi-unit complex, Max's Italian Restaurant and Pizzeria. Anybody else?
I'm happy to mask over you guys. Congratulations. Big deal. They were all bragging on those.
Everybody's okay. Appreciate it.
They could brag at all your neighbors and, uh-oh. Best looking.
Okay, so we've skipped around a little bit. We're, we're done with our Community Appearance Commission awards. Thank you all so much for, for coming and congratulations on those awards. We'll now go back to where we paused, which was ending with the oaths of office, and we will look for nominations for the Mayor Pretend.
I'd like to make the nomination, Mayor Pretend. I'd like to nominate you again.
Thank you Terry, I appreciate that.
I'll take that nomination.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're like a folk.
Well, thank you Terry, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you PJ. All in favor?
Aye.
We will, so that concludes that portion of our meeting under new business, and we're gonna take... Trying to, I'm gonna do that. Guess I have to take it over.
Feel the welcome, you sit down if you like. Or stay as long as you want.
Hey Terry, would you do it? Would you hold it for me?
Sure.
Is that okay?
I, state your name.
I, Ivy Ingram.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as Mayor Pretend.
The duties of my office as Mayor Pretend.
Of the Town of Killable Hills.
Of the Town of Killable Hills.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay, now that concludes the portion under new business. If we, there are refreshments, if you all would like to, to just grab some as you're leaving this evening, I know the, sort of the, the most fun part of the meeting is at this point, but we still have a lot of work to do, so we're gonna keep hanging out here. We're gonna take a brief pause. Terry, you wanna take a brief pause real quick?
Yeah, let me go. Can I take 10 seconds of the board time before we do that? I want to recognize, everybody in this row has gotten a front row seat of how hard the work is being done. You know, we all come here and I come here and I get to serve on this board, I get to do the work, prepare for this board. And the only reason I'm afforded this luxury is my beautiful wife is the anchor of my family and takes care of our, our children and gives me the opportunity to have this privilege. You all are...
Thank you.
And we very appreciate it. And I also want to apologize to the board for what was probably the loudest moment of silence.
Okay, so we'll take a quick pause. Anyone who's wanting to grab and go.
Grab and go, too.
Good.
Everybody. Can you see it?
Okay.
Call the meeting back to order. And we'll pick up where we left off, which is with committee reports. Anything this evening? You had a full report already, John, so...
Not from here.
I'm gonna rewind again. Under new business, we have number two, a recommendation for an amendment to chapter 96 seaside regulations, which I missed. Killable Hills and... You want me to read it? Killable Hills and Nags Head have a reciprocal agreement with their respective beach driving programs in which vehicles with a KDH permit are recognized and permitted on Nags Head beaches and vice versa. In 2021, the General Assembly approved legislation that permits licensed and registered modified utility vehicles, or MUTVs, on certain roadways, which could include on our beaches. At its November 3, 2021, meeting, the Nags Head Board of Commissioners amended its town ordinances to classify MUTVs as ineligible for beach driving. Assistant Police Chief Dana Harris attached a memorandum, which is in our packets, and describes the Nags Head change and recommends identical verbiage for Killable Hills ordinance to avoid confusion and maintain consistency with beach driving programs. The staff does recommend this for approval, and a motion would be in order. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Per temp, I would move to adopt this ordinance, new business, item beach driving ordinance, NB2.
Motion made by Terry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wenley, a second. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 I think it's a good thing you keep our ordinance consistent when acting and... How many people don't have to change their...
They don't get confused.
Thoughts? Yeah, when they go from town to town.
Right. Thank you very much.
I think it's a safety issue, too.
Yes. Okay, skip over committee reports since we did that, and we'll go on to commissioners' agenda. Anything this evening, Commissioner Wenley?
Not for me. I just want to briefly, I think it would be remiss if I didn't mention it. I'm excited to announce that last Monday I filed for district court judge in Raleigh for the first district of North Carolina. It's a lifetime dream of mine to become a judge, and after 17 years of practice on the Outer Banks, I think I'm ready. And I'm certainly excited about it. I just want to let the citizens of Killable Hills know that while I'll be campaigning for the nomination on May 17, that I will continue to work as hard as ever for the town and assure the people of Killable Hills that I will not allow it to conflict with my duties and responsibilities as Killable Hills commissioner. And I wanted to just let that be known. Also, an exciting note, I think. I usually don't say much, but during my agenda time, but I want to mention that I've been working with a great group of young middle school kids at First Flight Middle School. And I've been teaching concert band at the middle school for this past year. And they have their winter concert coming up. It's free. It's free to the public. It's the high school and the middle school together. It's this Thursday at 6 o'clock at First Flight High School. And what's... In a year where music almost died, in that we had Zoom lessons and things like that, where there really was no gathering and all of that, these kids have been working really hard. They're very excited to perform for the first time. At least the middle schoolers that picked an instrument two years ago had never performed in front of a crowd. I certainly know how special that is to perform in front of a group. These kids are really excited about it, so if you happen to be... Anyone listening, if you happen to be free Thursday night, you're in for a good show. I've really enjoyed working with the kids. Ms. Guns's daughter, Sydney, she's been a great help to me at the middle school. Mr. Lambert, the high school music director, he has also been a great help. And this concert will be all of the high school and middle school kids that play instruments. So they're all excited about it. I'm excited about it. I'm actually conducting the song, and Sydney's conducting some songs. We're gonna have a good time. And if, like I said, if you're free, please come out. The kids really want to show what they've been working on, so...
Super. Awesome.
Thank you very much. Exciting things on the horizon. I do have something for this evening. I just wanted to thank staff for the absolutely amazing job that's been done with the holiday markets. Meredith, I know Rachel, Michael, I mean, everyone has been working so hard to make these holiday markets happen. And not just the holiday market, but then the combination of the Santa with the holiday market. And that evening, I hope that was the first annual combination of the two, because it was a very, very fun evening, and I know I heard a lot of good feedback from it. And I think you guys are just doing a fantastic job of buildings and grounds. I mean, holiday market or not, everyone should go check out Aviation Park.
You're here.
A big thank you to all of you.
Last market is this Saturday, 10 to 2?
10 to 2.
Supposed to be 6 to 6:30.
Saturday, December 8th. It's supposed to be beautiful, so...
Not supposed to be, Scott.
Please come. Come check it out.
Last minute, no shipping issues.
No supply chains.
No supply chain.
We'll be on the car, everybody.
Walk away with your red bag.
Can I say two more things, actually? Real brief.
Sure.
Thank you to the firemen and the police for obviously Santa.
Yeah.
Bringing Santa around to all the neighborhoods. The kids love it. You know, I love it. It brings everybody to the right mood. I know you guys love it. You told me that you love seeing the kids' faces. And it's the little things like that. People build community. It's very, very special, so thank you for keeping that going. And also, Steve, I drive past every day. He's actually out there a bunch on Third Street. Third Street is coming along really well. You know, you can see where it's gonna be a really good addition to our town, be able to have that pathway, you know, to... From the west side to the east side, more or less. You know, I think it's gonna be great. I know you've been out there, and everybody's working hard out there. So thank you, Steve and crew over there for working that project. It's coming along quick. It looks like it is, at least.
Yeah, it's all focused on the water main replacement right now.
Right.
And that'll continue. They're gonna try to activate that Western Third probably right after the holidays. So there's gonna be some disruptions with Third Street closures for each of those cross streets that'll start to move east. And then after the holidays, they'll continue laying from where they're at, out to the bypass. And then hopefully, the storm drain work will be starting again, or starting in January as well, from Bay Drive and moving east. So there's a lot to do yet.
Yes.
There'll be some dust and disruption, but it is going quickly and going pretty smooth.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. All right, we will now move to the town manager's agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. A couple of things this evening. We're looking at our proposed 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. This has been quite an interesting calendar to try and put together. We got notified on Friday that the Superior Court of North Carolina had moved the primary election from March to May 17. So we did some additional juggling with the calendar. If you'll just take a brief look, you'll see the February meeting is scheduled for the 7th. The March meeting, the 7th. Those are different dates than our norm. Obviously, the Monday, May 16th meeting, that was scheduled so late in the month because of the early voting and the election, or the primary election. Had the second meeting in May. Then pretty much your schedule follows the norm until you get to October. And we just have the one meeting there again with some election issues. I do know from some conversation with some of the board that you did want to discuss the June 22 meeting, what might work with changing because of some possible conflicts. So if you'd like to establish that meeting date, the second meeting in June, then approve the calendar by motion would be great.
Was that June 22nd, me, or were there others as well? Their names. I just wanted to see them. I don't have a definitive answer yet. I'm hoping for some international travel. But as... And I did fail to mention, our mayor isn't with us this evening. He had some international travel plans for the holidays that changed at the last minute. And if it's one thing we're all learning through all this, it's that everything is gonna change and we just need to be flexible. So thanks for being flexible with me this evening. It's sort of my first run-through, our first official run-through. And so I'm hoping to be gone June 22nd. I would love to be here as well, but is... But I know we have budget things at that time. So is it... Is there a possibility of moving it to the next week or...
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And would that be okay with you all, just in safety, just to... In case I'm not back?
Like I said...
What I'm looking at is flying back on the 22nd, which would be...
Most kids have got RET and RED on top of it.
So that would be June 27th. Is that cutting it too close for you, Debbie?
No, ma'am.
27. Yep, work.
Okay. All right.
What about you, John?
27th, okay. Okay.
Trying to make the changes in my calendar right now.
Okay, then a motion would be in order to adopt the schedule with the change of June 22nd and May 16th.
So good. Second.
Motion by Terry, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a calendar.
Thank you very much. The second item is the board had indicated a desire to hold a half-day retreat for discussion of general topics. The mayor has given us three Saturdays in January that would work for him. And if the board wants to finalize that and adopt that date by motion, that would be great. The mayor has listed the 8th, the 15th, or the 22nd of January. These are... This would be from 9 to 1 on a Saturday here.
But let's go ahead and start with the 8th. Does the 8th work for... All right. Given that the 15th is somewhat of a holiday weekend and some of us have kids in school, I guess that would be a long weekend. Right, okay. So maybe just go ahead with the 8th, and then if that would give us some time, too, to push it back if need be.
Okay, okay.
And do you need a motion for that? Can we make a motion to...
I'll make the motion that we schedule our board retreat on January 8th, I believe, at 9 o'clock in the morning. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wenley. Thank you very much. Oh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our retreat.
Okay. And the town attorney...
The town attorney didn't have anything to say.
And Jer... Except some ice on it. But we hope he's better soon, for sure. I hope to have fun. And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda is a lot of paperwork. And there are some important items on here, so I'll just go through them. And you can approve, unless there's any objections, you can approve this just with one motion there at the end. So I will begin. The first item is the minutes from the November 8, 2021, meeting, the monthly report, October 2021. Budget amendment number eight, which is to pay for the installation of new end-car systems for the police department patrol division fleet. Number four is an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement 17 to the code of ordinances for the town. The Dare County Board of Commissioners, excuse me, the Dare County Tourism Board nominees to record the consensus of our board. The nominees were sent over. Commissioner Ingram, Wenley, and Commissioner McAvoy. The approval of the consent agenda will show this consensus by the board. And the Dare County Board of Commissioners did reappoint Commissioner Ingram for a second term at their December 6, 2021, meeting. Item six is the Coastal Studies Institute Sea Coast Research Program Letter of Commitment. This is another consensus item to show that the board did approve for a letter to go supporting this from the mayor. The same with the resolution opposing any changes to the North Carolina shrimp fisheries management plan. And it's my understanding that that did not pass, so that was successful with your resolution. The consensus approval for the Dare County Joint County, Joint KDH Infrastructure Improvements. This, as you recall, has been some discussion about the Killable Hills Fire Police and Dare County EMS up at the old Mako site. And preliminary work with the architect, it was determined that in order to accomplish a structure that would help our public services, excuse me, public safety departments grow, that that particular site, while maintaining the operation of the fire department and the EMS site during construction, would not accommodate both Killable Hills Police and Fire. So at this time, we've gotten consensus from the board just to move forward with Dare County on the joint EMS fire department. Thank you for that. Number nine is scheduling public hearings. I will tell you that B2 has been pulled by the applicant, so that public hearing does not need to be scheduled this evening. Started beginning, special use application, 2003 South Proitan Highway in the commercial zone to add outdoor dining activity. This particular public hearing will be conducted as a quasi-judicial in nature. It's outlined in the special use applications. If you recall, when all of that changed not too long ago. So this will be our first one that this board has actually met under this way. B, zoning amendment request. The first one is 153-210C, light industrial 2 zone to increase floor area ratio for multifamily development. As I said, number two's been recalled at the request of the applicant. Number three, 153-3110A and 153-311A cottage courts and cluster homes to remove requirement to abut NC 12 in the commercial and ocean impact residential zone. Number four, 153-100D, ocean impact residential zone and 153-180C, commercial zone, to add density requirements for cottage court and cluster homes. And then lastly, 153-0768, 13, off-street parking and loading to add sidewalk requirements for cottage courts and cluster homes. Recommend that the Board of Commissioners schedule these public hearings for January. Recommend that the Board of Commissioners schedule these public hearings for January... January 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. And a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented.
That was a lot of information. Thank you very much for going through that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor pro tem, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and by Commissioner Terry Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries for consent agenda. Thank you. This brings us to the public comment period. We have a second public comment. Sue?
Yeah? Sue Kelly, very briefly for the CAC. Just to let you know, our next meeting will be Thursday, January 27, 8:30 a.m. in this room. All are welcome. We will be at the table. Thanks to staff for letting us do a table on Saturday at the holiday markets. We're looking forward to that. And lastly, the deadline for applications for one of our live oak trees is December 31. We've already got a bunch more than we anticipated. I don't know what the current number is, but it'll be fun trying to figure out how many trees we can afford and who gets them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Close our second public comment. And I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn. I'd like to tell everyone, please have a safe and healthy and happy holiday. Drive careful on the roads. Don't hurry. Don't drink and drive. Thank you all so much for being here. And we have a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'll make, Mayor pro tem, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.